Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Board meeting. We have an interesting meeting tonight. Excuse me. It's not the usual. But I think it's going to be very interesting. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at that very large document that Brandy sent out, but it's daunting, to say the least. So I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Brandy, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair?
Present.
Mr. Joe Lynch?
Here.
Cheryl Mimi?
Present.
Michelle Reese?
Present.
Larry Dukes?
Here we go. Here. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. And that's all we have with us tonight, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So far.
But that's sufficient for a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the next order of business is to appoint a vice chair?
Yes, ma'am. We have two nominations. We have two nominations for Mr. Joe Lynch and then a nomination for Mr. Larry Dukes. So we'll need to take a roll call vote on who the board would like to see as vice chair.
Okay. Do you want to call the roll?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure, Michelle.
I know not personally either members that are up for the vice chair position. And I'm not really trying to stretch this out too much longer, but would it be too much to ask if we could just have both nominees maybe just say who they are, what they do, and, you know, what they hope to bring to the Planning Board? I mean, I hate to put anybody on the spot like that, but really, I just saw the email like four minutes ago, like, submit nominations, and I apologize for that. I text better than I email. But, you know, if we're going to do a roll call kind of vote thing, I would really just kind of like to hear both of the nominees, if they wouldn't mind, just briefly, you know, say hi. You know, I'm Michelle, and this is what I hope to bring to the Planning Board. I just would, if anybody wouldn't mind.
Well, Michelle, these are people who are already on the Planning Board, who are being nominated for the position of vice chair.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't know either of them. So for me to vote for a vice chair, I realize that, I just, you know, I mean, I believe it, I know Joe has been on for a bit. The other person, is that a new person?
So Joe and Larry, would you give us an elevator speech about why you wanted to, why you came onto the Planning Board?
Okay, this is Joe. I've been on the Planning Board for a few years now. Started as, you know, as an alternate member. And my primary purpose, and still is, is to make sure that I serve my community. I think that's important. It's an important thing for me to be involved in my community. And basically, that's it in a nutshell. There's nothing in it for me, per se. I just want to be of support here.
Okay. And Larry?
Larry Dukes, I've been a resident of Indian Trail for 15 years now, live in a development where I've been very actively involved with the HOA and other aspects of the development. Before moving to North Carolina, was involved in other planning organizations. And in my current professional job, I work as a technology manager for a Fortune 1000 sized company. I work with budgets and planning quite a bit, so I bring that to the table.
Okay. Michelle, do you want to hear from the other members of the board who are here as well?
No, no, ma'am. Thank you so much. I just really, I've only seen Larry like one time, and I just really wanted to know who I was looking at and who I was voting for. I just really wanted to, you know, in this environment, kind of just put a face to the name and know what I'm doing. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Okay. Brandy, will you call the roll, please? You're muted, sweetie.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. So we're looking at nomination for vice chair for Joe Lynch or Larry Dukes. I'll start with you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I choose Joe Lynch, please.
Okay. Mr. Lynch, your vote?
Joe Lynch.
Ms. Reese?
For Joe as well.
Ms. Mimi?
Mr. Lynch.
And Mr. Dukes?
Larry Dukes.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Lynch. You are our new vice chair.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to approve the minutes of the October 20th and 22nd meeting. If anyone has any changes or corrections to those minutes, would you please speak up? If not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for those two meetings?
This is member Michelle Reese, and I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Cheryl Mimi, a second.
Okay. All approved, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? The motion is carried. Okay. The new business is that humongous document that Brandy sent out. And I think that Brandy and, let's see, who is it? And Tim are going to give us the high points of that, because from what I understand, a lot of it is, in essence, boilerplate that is set up by the state of North Carolina. So we really don't have any, anything to approve. We're just, in essence, being notified of what the changes are. But Brandy or Tim, do you want to review that for the group?
Yeah. This is Tim Jones, Senior Planner, here with the town. And thank you for having us and for looking at this gigantic document. Here we go. Yeah, this is for, to amend our Unified Development Ordinance for 160D changes, but also there are some staff recommended edits. And we'll summarize some of the highlights of those. This request is for the text amendment, as I mentioned, to incorporate the new general statutes for Chapter 160D, as well as some staff recommended changes. Case is ZT 2020-0121. The applicant is the town, the Planning Department, specifically. The intent is to abide by the North Carolina law, the general statutes, and make other recommended changes for necessary policy change or just clarification of ordinance Background of the request, the, was for the, as I mentioned, the general statutes update, the sweeping changes for the statutes, specifically the planning section that's in there. Then additional revisions, which are broken up as some policy changes, some clarity changes in the regulations, and then some administrative changes in, you know, moving some sections around, or if there's repeated sections, deleting, you know, what doesn't need to be repeated. Some of this material was also to use what we paid a consultant to also work on last year. We kept, we kept an eye on the document that we had already invested in over the past couple of years to see what we could pull in from that, too, as some good suggestions and good changes. And make best use of their money that was spent. Okay, this, basically, the two large attachments you received. One was this list of revisions for 160D. They followed an outline that, we have a big benefit here in the state, and that's the UNC School of Government. And their law folks there help all the communities in North Carolina to break down some of the legalese for us folks out here, trying to interpret it and use it in our codes. And so they had training for this. They had prepared materials to break this down into an outline. And you see part of the outline there with number seven, comprehensive plan. The numbered items are the sections they had broken down, where either they, there must be a change, or there may be a change. Some of them were just, hey, just be aware. And then the bulleted items underneath each of those was the Planning Department's resulting action on that, and in the sections that we specifically added. Yeah, the sections we added, inserted, or deleted. We also, the list included, further down the list, it lists the other edits. And, let's see here. That might have repeated, the UNC School of Government summary list of changes. It's not that piece. It's the other changes included, various levels of policy change, administrative changes, clarification of text or formatting changes that we listed as we went through the document. We listed the section changed, added, inserted, or deleted. Second large document, of course, is the actual item that you're voting on. The previous one, back up, you know, this list of revisions that you were given is kind of a guide for you to look at what you end up recommending, or what Town Council ends up voting on, is basically the second item, which is the revisions that are in red. Those are the actual changes as a whole. And they're listed in red, so we can track all the changes. And the table of contents and things that are in the Word document, don't pay as much attention to that. It's, the lawyers call it, whether it's substantive or not, of substance. And, you know, the chapter numbers and the table of contents is not the thing you vote on. It's the content, the policy, the language. You know, we can tweak numbers, and we don't have to get approval, but we do have to get approval if we change language or the meaning. So, you know, don't be as concerned with the numbering system. So featured revisions. The image there you see is from our training document, book list we received when we went to training. But the sweeping edits throughout the document for the 160D portion, of course, the general statute reference changes. New section on annexations. It's really nothing new from what we were doing. It's just actually mentions it, which wasn't even mentioned before. An enhanced conflict of interest standards, including new standards for staff for avoiding conflict of interest. Added new regulations for development agreements. That was a large section to help formalize that process that, you know, was already, you know, going on, but to take some of the new legislation and put behind that was nice to have. That's in this new update. Some additional featured revisions. We took out special use permits. Now, if anything needs additional review, and there is a special use or special something or another, it's flagged as needing a conditional zoning legislative process. In the past, special use permits, at one time, were going through Town Council for approval. And now, new statutes make it available to go with the legislative process now. And we can eliminate taking certain development projects. We don't want to take development-related things to Board of Adjustment for some, and then for conditional zonings, take developments to Town Council. This takes them all to Town Council and through the Planning Board. And so that was changed on the use table as well. We also made notification distances the same. We had a rule for certain things were set 400 feet away from the property line, others were 500. We just made it 500, and then everybody knows the number. The zoning administrator position wasn't used before. It was in the code. It was in, probably in the template several years back that they started with, and just left that position in there. We don't have one, so we place that under the Planning Director. And then staff works as delegated by the Planning Director. So that zoning administrator position, you'll see that's removed, but placed under the Planning Director for the role. Consolidation of permitted uses tables, our Division 500 gets into really what can be done where, and in what zoning district. And before, you had to look at residential in one section and had its own table, and you would get down to business and commercial, and it would be in one table. And then you'd get down to industrial, and then to institutional. So four sections of tables. And if you wanted to look straight across from a use and see, you know, gas station or single-family homes, you can do this now. You can look straight across all the districts and see that table. And I have an example here that's in the, that's in all your material for the changes. We have organized it into similar groups that were there before, in the use category on the left-hand side, and then similar uses that are in those use types. We've removed the S. There's no S for S U Ps, for special use permits. If there was a need for special use permit, it's conditional. If it was something that should have been permitted, it may be permitted now, especially if it was something like in a higher intensity use area that made sense to that land use. But special use permits were removed to take away from the Board of Adjustment and put them back through a process where the Planning Board and the Town Council look at development-related That's a sample there. In summary, this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan in an overall way. It promotes the goals, the plan with land use and housing. And you can see those items there by promoting a mix of different types of land uses, by providing a diverse range of housing options. It kind of continues that by still organizing things and clarifying things. It still promotes these goals, improving existing Indian Trail neighborhoods, coordinating with land development stakeholders. You know, this is the tool. The Unified Development Ordinance is the tool to accomplish things in the comprehensive plan, or at least guide them. And we think this is a reasonable request. So, you know, the next thing would be for the requested action, but I want to stop here and pass it, pass it back over to Madam Chair or to Brandy, in case we have, I don't know if we have any public speakers, or, and/or discussion, whichever order we want to take that in.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. And I'd just like to say to the board that this was a very tedious process, so I'm so pleased that we have someone like Tim on staff who is willing and enjoys this process. So, Tim, thank you for your work. This has been a big project to undergo and has saved the town a lot of money by him doing it in-house for us. We do not have any members of the public to speak, so we'll entertain any questions from the board, if there are any.
I have a question. The consolidated table of permitted uses, that's something that actually I've been looking for, because it does list the various zoning classifications with what they cover. Is it possible that we can get a copy of that? I tried to print out a couple of pages of this document, and for some reason, there doesn't seem to be a page number. And rather than print out all 500 and something pages, I figured I would wait and ask you guys.
Yeah. We can get you whatever you need for that.
I think that would be helpful for all of us when we, when we look at developments, and it brings you right there. It just shows you exactly what the previous zone classification was and what we are changing it to. So I think that that would be helpful for all of the members of the board.
This will also be, once this gets to approval in whatever form, then my work continues. I have to take all of these edits and put them in our new MuniCode system that's online. And so all these edits will be put into MuniCode.
What is that?
MuniCode is where Unified, sorry about that. MuniCode is a company that we recently hired to, to take and put our ordinance on it. They have a service they sell to lots of communities around the country to digitize and put ordinances for towns on, online, on the web, but they're highly searchable. They have a strong search feature on them to find things quickly, to bring, to search on something and bring up a table of items where you can find it, and they're highlighted. So we subscribed, the Planning Department subscribed to that several months ago, and we've had one edit, the board member case that came through to change the number of board members. That was our first edit to MuniCode. And then there'll be this. And great thing about MuniCode, it also will catalog everywhere there's an edit, and it will have the approval document connected to it. And it will, it will also have that table you were talking about, the table of uses. And if you need something printed out special for that, because it's, I've designed, it pretty much is for 11 by 17. So if we need to print some 11 by 17s, we can do that for the board.
Yes, Madam Chair. What we'll do is, we will get that out, hopefully, before the end of the week to each of the board members. It's not a ton of pages, so if the board members don't find it useful, that's okay, but we'll drop that in the mail to you guys. And just a brief comment to tag on to what Tim was saying with MuniCode is, that's an industry standard. Every jurisdiction I've worked for has some sort of program like this, but MuniCode's certainly the leader. And we took this to council during our last budget, and they, they actually didn't even wait to approve it in the budget. They said, no, we definitely need to be online, and we were very archaic in our processes, and said, go ahead and let's make this work within the existing budget. So we were very pleased that they agreed with the need for that, and it's really changed how we as staff can use the UDO and how easy it is for residents or engineers or developers to find what they're looking for, rather than searching through, you know, 465 pages of a PDF. It's all online. And I think Tim's going to briefly show you, but it's, it's been a game changer for us for sure, so we're very thankful for it.
You can see this, Brandy?
Yes.
Yeah. Under the Planning Department, there's the Unified Development Ordinance, and then this is linked here. And then MuniCode.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah. You know, you can, you can look through this area. You can go to, you know, conditional zoning.
So it takes, it really helps, you know, get you there quick, even if you know the UDO document, but it also helps the average citizen who, you know, this document is daunting. It helps break it down easier.
Sure, sure. No, I think that's excellent. I'm glad that the board, I vaguely remember that vote and not really understanding what it was for, but now I do. That's excellent.
Yeah, the, upstairs, I call it the administrative office with the town clerk. They're working within, possibly in the future, to include some other documents in here. So there could be some additional things to come.
Okay.
Brandy, have a question?
Sure.
Okay. So is the UDO, is that something that you said every municipality in North Carolina uses?
So, no. So the Unified Development Ordinance is our guiding document, kind of our planner's bible, so to speak, what we use every day. Most municipalities have some form of it. You know, there's a couple of different wordings for it, but MuniCode is where that document is stored, and that's what we have on our screen that we're looking at. MuniCode is simply, you know, a firm that does, is in the business of, you know, making these codes online and searchable. They have a legal team that goes through a review to make sure that whatever, you know, is put up on the site is kosher legally. Not every municipality, by any means, you know, smaller municipalities would probably, you know, not necessarily be able to maybe afford it, or, you know, have a big enough code to need it. But it's the industry leader. That's normally, MuniCode's normally the one that folks select, but there's other options out there.
And we probably pay some sort of annual fee for the use of this?
We do.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I understand.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Jones, I think you mentioned that, on that first bullet point, I think that some decisions or approval that that some decisions or approval that were not coming to the Planning Board will, after this approval, will then come to the Planning Board. Is that something that's going to be incremental volume, or was that just going in tandem and behind the scenes anyway?
I'm not sure what that might mean in volume. I don't know.
Yeah, I'd be glad to take that question. So we're gonna triple your workload. No, I'm just kidding. So we, we really didn't get that many SUPs. I don't know that it would add too much to the volume, you know, give a rough over the last couple of years, you know, maybe two, three, four cases. I think with the volume that you guys deal with conditionally, you, you won't even really notice it. And it will be incremental and, and it's, you know, whenever we get a request for that specific use.
Okay, thanks.
And, and we don't, we don't feel like that it's overburdened some for you guys by any means. But, but if you feel that way going forward, let us know.
Yeah, because you know, this, there's still some, some wishlist items and things that we'll be coming up with for additional edits to the UDO down the line. And it turns out there's some edits that we need to make to adjust down the line, then we can do that.
So just to tag along to what Tim's saying, a combination of hiring freezes throughout COVID, our volume of work as a department's been tripled since COVID, believe it or not. So we did have high hopes to dig into some of those. You know, there's, we kind of have a wishlist of, from a planning department, receiving input from other departments or just within our, our department itself. Most of that wishlist is gonna be put on hold for a little bit. You know, aside from the challenges that, that 2020's presented us, I do feel like with COVID and having virtual meetings, you know, if you're gonna have items that could be contentious changes, it, it might be better to just wait till we can all be back in, in the same room together and have public comment like we normally would. That was, that was our decision.
Sounds reasonable. Okay, any other questions? So what specifically is the, are, are we as a board voting on?
Let me switch to that, switch back to my slides here. You can see these motions. Did they come back up on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's all of the, all of the red line, all of the edits that were done to the document? Is that what we are?
Yes.
On?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, if there are no other questions, I will entertain a, a motion to approve or recommend denial.
This is Michelle Reese, and I make the motion to recommend approval of ZT 2020 0121 petition as presented.
And this is Cheryl Mimi, I second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think that is all the business we have. It's a really short meeting tonight.
I know, according to that document, I thought I would be here for a long, long time.
We're giving you a little bright, but December, not so much.
Okay, Brandy, do you know if we have a, a meeting? Because the December meeting is pretty close to Christmas.
So our December meeting is December the 15th. We do have one item that is scheduled to go before the board.
Okay. Very good.
It's not, just, just I'll give you a, a little intro, in case you want to drive by there before you get your packets. The request is subdivision called Oak Haven. And if you're familiar with the Harkey Creek subdivision that's being constructed in Union County jurisdiction, this was a project that was originally a part of the, the very early concept of Harkey Creek, and that owner backed out for whatever reason. So that, that request is coming to us for consideration.
Okay, is that the one that we talked about last month?
Oh, maybe. Brandy, I think that was the one. It's Williams Pond this coming up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No worries. You're thinking about Town Council.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm thinking about Town Council. I'm sorry. I apologize, board. So yes, I take that back. Williams Pond, it's going to be off of Rogers Road, just past Cornerstone and Villas of Sun Valley. It is a annexation request, so it's currently Union County unincorporated, coming in with, I think, 49 homes. Is that correct, Matt?
Correct. Correct.
There you go. Thank you, Matt.
Where on Rogers Road?
Ra- Rogers Road, just past, if you're familiar with Cornerstone subdivision.
Yeah, so division over there.
A small, a small, just past Villas at Sun Valley.
Basically right next to it.
Right. There's a mobile home park across the street.
Okay. So there, there, since there does not seem to be any additional business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Cheryl, we have to have a motion first, so you're gonna move it.
Oh, I motion to adjourn. I motion.
All approved, all in favor, say aye. Okay, I wish everybody a very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, good night.
Bye, bye-bye.